Do not change your TV screens. It is a Wednesday. This is Murfreesboro City Council's special meeting, 4 o'clock. We're going to talk about budget today. And those of y'all may be wondering why we are wearing Murfreesboro Fire and Rescue Department hats. And not only are we wearing those to support our service providers, Fire Department, Police Department, and many other people who serve the residents of this city, but we're also wearing these. I hear something blowing there. Okay, it's gone now. I kept hearing something in the background. We're wearing these for one of our fellow council members. So Vice Mayor Young, who I think many of us would agree is one of the absolutely most selfless people that you'll ever meet, never wants credit for himself, always is one who is standing for what's good. And he's going through a battle that we feel confident that, just like the issues he tackles on council, he'll tackle this one with no problem. So Vice Mayor Young is going through an illness that he is going to be fine with. And so we're all wearing hats in honor of him today. And want you to know how much that we appreciate you, how much we love you, and how much we're going to be praying for you. And we're thankful for you, Doug.
With support like that, how can I go wrong? Thank you, Mayor.
Amen. All right. We're going to have a quick change. I'm not going to move around like I did last time, but all you guys who were not here last week, we just sort of picked everybody out of the hat. But we're going to quickly, and I should not do this because those of y'all who have not seen my new computer screen, Tracy Wilkins, who's sitting out there last year, did a joke about what happens when you put Doogie Howser and Bob the Builder together. You get the mayor of the sixth largest city of Murfreesboro. And so I click on my computer screen, and Chris Lilly has put Bob the Builder, Doogie Howser, and a picture of me with that bunny Murfreesboro on there. Anyway, Chris has got two twins who are graduating school tonight, so we are going to move him up to the front of the list. All right, Chris, information technology, and that's page 75. We'd want to ask if council members, we're going to get through the entire budget tonight, and if you have anything that is not in the budget, if it's okay, let's do that at our cleanup session that's going to be, is that next Thursday?
Yes, we advertise it at 4 o'clock. I think if we met at 5:30, let's say 5 o'clock next Thursday, that'll give us an hour and a half because you've got an open mic session next week.
It was advertised at 5:30.
It's advertised at 5:30?
In the paper, but we can run another ad if we know you want to do that.
Okay. Let's meet at 5 o'clock just so we don't have to feel rushed to get through our cleanup session. So if there are items that the council wants us to deal with, we can talk about that next week.
Is that cool with everyone? All right, awesome. All right, Chris, page 75, IT.
Okay, first I'd like to thank you for switching me around, Mayor. I did have fun with putting that picture on your screen, and since you did this for me, I'll take it off.
All right. I haven't been able to... That's a true story. I showed that to my wife, she laughed, and I said, "I have no idea how to take this off the screen."
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I would just like to take a few minutes to outline a few of the IT Department's accomplishments for fiscal year 2016, and then I'll go over some of the major objectives for the upcoming year. In fiscal year 2016, we completed the implementation of three enterprise-wide applications. The first was the implementation of a new enterprise resource planning application called Munis. The ERP systems included in our, the human resources system, which was implemented later in the year. This system was integrated with a third-party time and attendance tool called Kronos. As our city continues to grow, we've noticed that requests for specialized services for our GIS department increased. We combined them and identified the common requests received. A plan was then created, and a new and improved GIS mapping solution was created and rolled out for public use. The GIS Division continues to create iOS and Windows-based mobile applications to aid our public works and fire inspectors. Last year, 65 PCs were identified as insufficient for business use and were replaced as part of our PC replacement project. Out of the 65 PCs replaced, 10 are being recycled and will be used at our community centers for student homework help services. Our UAS program continues to take off, no pun intended. One of our major accomplishments is being the first city in the state of Tennessee to receive federal approval to fly our UAS aircraft. We are currently working with several departments to aid in improving their customer service offerings and to help in providing and maintaining public safety. Our IT help desk received over 6,000 calls this year, with one of three calls being resolved during the first call. Now, if you'll allow me, I'll kind of talk about the IT strategic plan for a little bit. Three years ago, I presented to the council an IT strategic plan which outlined a citywide technical improvement plan for the next five to six years. This year, we have completed the implementation of our ERP system, the HRIS system, the time and attendance solution, and our court information system should go live by fourth quarter of fiscal year 2017. We are now at a phase where we can begin to gather business needs and requirements to kick off the selection for our land management software. This software will centralize and automate our planning, permitting, licensing, and asset management efforts while adding functionality to interact with citizen requests. We will continue to improve our UAS Division by working with our departments to fulfill requested UAS service needs. In this next year, we will be working with the city management and leadership team in developing an improved internal communication strategy. We will continue to improve customer service by increasing IT availability, faster response times while reducing turnaround times, and implementing a customer satisfaction survey. We will continue to upgrade or replace outdated network infrastructure equipment. And last, our major goal is the completion of the city's first training center. This center will have up to three training rooms and will accommodate up to 50 students at a time. I now open for any questions.
Mr. Lillie, I would just like to say you're doing a fabulous job keeping us on top. I don't understand a lot of things you do. It's all foreign to me, but you're doing a great job, especially when I heard you say that we're the first in the state of Tennessee to get your...
To get approval from the FAA to fly our UAS system. We're also only one of 18 cities in the nation to have that approval.
And that I'm sure came from your research and recommendations. So that's great that you research a lot of things to make our city on top. That's great.
Thank you.
Hey, Chris, you may or may not know the answer to this question. Somebody asked me last night at softball games out at Spring Fling. We were in the park, and they were wanting to fly a drone to film some of the ballgame. And I said, "I just don't think you're allowed to do that on government property, especially right next to the airport."
Yeah, that's, it's wrong in a lot of ways. As a matter of fact, and it was in the slide, it was in the slide, but I was moving through the slides fast, is that we're about to put out seven public service announcements addressing UAS safety because there was over 400,000 drones sold nationally during Christmas last year. So we're seeing them flown illegally, we're seeing YouTube's of them being flown illegally. So we don't want to think that people want to fly them illegally, it's just that we want to make sure that we point people in the right direction to the FAA site and how to safely fly and where to safely fly. So we're going to put out some PSAs in the near future. As a matter of fact, we've already finished the first one, which is an initial, and that's a collaboration with the county, with the city, and with MTSU. But we're going to put out some, kind of some small ones, two minutes max, of some safety. But yeah, flying in the park, overcrowded, which is a violation, so close to the airport, which is a violation. You have to make sure they're registered with FAA. All drones are to be registered with the FAA now, but there are, yes, it's wrong in several ways.
Okay. I gave them good advice.
Thank you.
Hey, Chris, I guess I'll just kind of try to add something to the list for this year. I think it's still correct that we're not able to accept credit and debit cards at a lot of our park facilities. You know, a lot of our park stuff is free, but some of it isn't. You know, the tennis center being a great example. I went out there recently, and it was 52 bucks, and I had to go to my truck to wrangle up some quarters to fill out the 52 bucks. I think people just aren't used to carrying a lot of cash around now. And so, you know, at Sportscom recently, and signed up a membership, and, you know, had to go back out of my truck, get my checkbook, and I just, I don't know, it seems to me like it's time to move that higher up on the list if we can. We need to get that done. Now, I'll tell you, the tennis complex alone, we saw the numbers at the meeting the other day, I mean, you know, is a lot of revenue for people to have to bring cash. And so, anyway, if you can maybe plug that in for the 2016-17 year, that'd be great.
Yes, that was actually plugged in. It wasn't on the roadmap that I showed you tonight, but we are actually in development. We have a billing system that we've converted over to with Parks and Rec, starting with the tennis facility called Active Networks. And they're actually, we're actually working with them, and it's in their development right now to create the credit card processing system that we'd have to use to where certain costs have to go certain ways in order for us to be able to use it. So they are working on that. When last I checked, they said it's actually in, they call it user acceptance testing, which means they've already programmed for it to work. Then they have to send it through their quality assurance, and their quality assurance gives a thumbs up, then it comes to us for testing, for beta testing. And then once that's approved, then we can turn that feature on.
We'll be able to use that at Sportscom and Patterson and everywhere else.
We're using it everywhere. Yes, we will be.
Okay. Good point, very good point. All right. Chris, thank you. Enjoy graduation.
Thank you.
All right, well, now move to Building and Co's Department.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. The Building and Co's Department budget's on page 121. Recap a little bit of what we've accomplished this past year. I think most of you know, we had a director to jump ship, move over to planning. We also had two long-term permit clerks retire. So all our permit clerks have been moved to new positions. We've been retraining all them. I think we're back up and doing better than we have been. I think the proof is in the pudding. Our revenue for this year is predicted to be 40% more than it was last year. We've issued 213 more permits for single-family dwellings and townhomes. New commercial seems to be coming to life. We issued 13 more permits for that. So in light of those increases, we've asked for two new positions. Well, I shouldn't say two new ones, one new one, one building inspector. And then we currently have a part-time permit clerk. We'd like to make full time. And that will help us to continue with the sign ordinance changes, ADA renovations to the city-owned buildings, and continue with community outreach through Facebook and social media. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Any questions from Mr. Lewis? Why did I say that, Rob? I'll never get a permit again, ever.
Trust, you will, trust me.
Let me rephrase that. I'll never get a C of O again.
That may be interesting.
Sorry about that.
That's all right.
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move to the planning department. Page 126.
Evening, Mayor, members of the council. Just for the record, I didn't jump ship, I actually walked the plank. We, I'm pleased to be able to present the planning budget this year for the second time. Mr. Holtz had covered some permitting items, and I'd like to go over a few of the planning goals and things that we met this year. First of all, we gave preliminary approval of 1,277 lots and final approval of 914 lots. We held 72 public hearings, seemed like a lot more. We had 3,000 applications for permits, and we had 6,900 visitors to the planning engineering department. Chris said I had to say engineering. So we have had an extremely busy year, actually the last three years. We have watched construction increase all three years, this year being probably the most. I would say our submittals for site plan review and for plan commission, we would average anywhere from 45 to, I think the highest was 57, 58 submittals. We pulled some 11:30, 12 o'clock planning commission meetings. A few of you on the council remember those, I'm sure. So we've been extremely busy this year. We will finish up the 2035 study this year. Jennifer sent out a timeline on that, so we've made a lot of progress in the last two months on that. We do have three other studies going, the Highland Avenue study, the historic bottom study, as well as the design guidelines. We're really excited about those studies. We have a lot of interest in redeveloping the downtown. So those are going to be a lot of fun this year, and looking forward to those. We did ask for two positions. One of them are not in the budget. I talked to Mr. Lyons about it, and he has graciously agreed that we need this position. The first one is actually an assistant director for succession planning, and then the other one is for a secretarial position. If you've been up in the planning and engineering department, you'll notice that we're doing some remodeling. Once that remodeling is done, there will be a front open cubicle, and this secretarial position would actually sit at that position and field the calls, not just for planning, but it's for planning, engineering, traffic, IT, all the calls and all the visitors come into that front lobby. So it may be in my budget, but they will definitely be shared among all the departments on our side of the hall. With that, I'll be happy to try to answer any questions if you've got any at this time.
Any questions from Mr. Whitaker? All right, Mr. Whitaker, thank you.
Thank you.
Engineering Department. Your change order is on page, I mean, your budget's on page 139.
Thank you, Mayor. It's well deserved. Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, I appreciate the opportunity to serve along some of the best coworkers in the state. Appreciate their willingness to serve the residents of Murfreesboro in everything they do, from removing snow and ice from the streets after a winter storm to managing one of the largest TDOT local programs projects that's currently going on in the state with the Middle Tennessee Boulevard construction project. They certainly answer the call when needed. The engineering budget is dominated by really the grant-funded portion of current capital improvement projects. We estimate over $5.8 million will be spent and later reimbursed for projects this year, such as the rideaway acquisition for Bradaville Pike, construction costs for the Middle Tennessee Boulevard project that I mentioned, and then engineering design for Cherry Lane. I mentioned the construction of Middle Tennessee Boulevard is underway. Also, Lottle Street, Phase 1 and Phase 2 will begin shortly. And we also celebrated the completion of Veterans Parkway, which is originally the Southwest Loop, which is a 10.5-mile section of five-lane roadway, four or five-lane roadway around the south and western portion of the city. Currently, we have about 10 projects that are in some form of design that the engineering department is managing. And then we also average about 40 sets of plans for private development, either neighborhoods or sites, for the monthly planning commission meetings. With that, I would like to give Raymond Hillis, Mr. Raymond Hillis, a chance to give updates on some work that's going on in our street division.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, City Administration. Let me first off say, on behalf of the engineering and street division, we want to thank you for your continued support. I say this a lot, without your guys' help, we would be, our hands would be tied, so I want to thank you for that. Just a couple of things I want to cover as far as accomplishment goes. We successfully completed over 100 storm drain projects this past year, responded to two major winter storm events and placing about 1,300 tons of salt down. We updated and implemented a new sweeper route and added to that as well. We successfully repaired over 150 road repairs throughout the city and not counting potholes. So that's just in the road failures that were brought to our attention and we knew of. We successfully processed and completed 250 what we call general work orders, which would range from broken curb and gutter, any sidewalk that's broken, any of those kinds of things like that that we completed. We completed Phase 1 of the building maintenance program, including hiring two new employees for that. We are continually to working on the new site there at the West Main Fuel Station that we're hopefully here. I think the final completion date on that is in the next couple of weeks, and hopefully we'll have that as our target and be ready to roll that out as well. We also implemented the new route for our stormwater maintenance inlet and vacuuming storm system, which has been very successful. Going forward, we look, we're working currently, I'm working with TDOT in updating our state maintenance contract, reflecting the new annexations for the city. I don't know how much you guys know about that, but we are allotted amount of money from the state for doing the state maintenance within the city of Murfreesboro. That annexation, those annexations hadn't been up to date in a long time, so I'm working with the state to do that. We're also continuing to work on our salt routes with the new section of Joby Jackson being added, and all the roads that's coming in, that stuff needs to be added into our system as well. We want to continue with a strong emphasis on the second phase of our stormwater maintenance program and working with Rob Water and Sewer. We will be hiring three new employees for that, and that will finish up our stormwater crew, which that's what they will be doing 24/7. We want that crew to do nothing but work on stormwater projects, regrading ditches, cleaning out inlets, and taking care of the storm drain issues that we may have in town. We're also going to continue to push hard on working on our facility maintenance program. We want to continue to train in each one of our employees with a strong focus on customer service. We want our response time to be quicker, and we want to be sure that we are taking care of the citizens of Murfreesboro. I also want to implement this year with a new brine system that was approved. We're looking forward to being able to get ahead of the storm and placing some brine down, which will help alleviate some of those issues. We also are continuing to work on our asphalt maintenance program, which includes working on our asphalt failures, potholes, those things, that nature. We're looking at purchasing a new pothole patching truck that I'm working on right now. My biggest issue that I battle is being able to get my hands on material in the wintertime. So I'm doing some research on that right now. That is the biggest issue that we have, obviously, after every snow, potholes just come up everywhere. So our biggest battle that we face is being able to have the material ready to fix those. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have concerning the street division.
Five new employees, it says, you have three new for stormwater. What are the other two?
They were being funded out of the stormwater fund, so it's probably not being reflected in that, is it, Rob? I wouldn't think.
The new positions were funded from stormwater, not from general fund?
Yeah, it's actually, I'm sorry, it's actually a typo on that. The three positions are from the stormwater. The other two positions are, they were listed as new positions, but they're actually intended to be promotions.
Okay.
Sometimes these projects may not seem very glamorous, but your stormwater projects and your sidewalk repairs and things like that are greatly appreciated by the people that use them. I know drainage ditches are a non-glamorous thing, but they get clogged and people get mad, and you have done a remarkable job in improving that this year, and it's noticeable.
Thank you. I appreciate that a great deal. We take pride in doing that, so thank you.
I'm going to mention something to you, too, that I think is appropriate, in case I don't take other time to do it, is... that use them. I know drainage ditches are a non-glamorous thing, but they get clogged and people get mad, and you have done a remarkable job in improving that this year, and it's noticeable.
Thank you. I appreciate that a great deal. We take pride in doing that, so thank you.
I'm gonna mention something to you, too, that I think is appropriate, in case I don't take other time to do it, is when I run into my buddies and they say, you know, "You're on the city council? Man, all these people, they call you about getting a pothole fixed," or whatever. Basically, my answer is, no, I basically never get that call or email. That happens very rarely, but, you know, I get the gist of what they're saying, but I want to tell you, I appreciate it, because that is a cool thing, that we do take care of our streets around here, and, you know, when I say that, everybody kind of goes, "Yeah, well, I don't guess I really noticed that either." It's kind of a cool little conversation, but thanks.
Thank you.
And to echo my fellow council members, I wasn't getting out at the time, but when we had those surprise snows this past year, I just want to congratulate you. I did receive some phone calls saying how great the roads were when they got up and got out, even when the schools were closed, you still had people going to work when it was really bad, and they said the streets were fabulous. So, we want to thank you for that, that snow. It surprised us, but it didn't surprise you all, you did a fabulous job.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thanks, yes. Chris, you gonna handle state street aid?
Yes, sir, if that's okay. The state street aid budget, which is listed on page one-fifty in your budget document, it is the, it's basically the funding from the state of Tennessee fuel tax allocation to the city, and is based on the city's population. The funding covers expenditures to maintain state street, or maintain streets within the city limits. The largest expenditure is more than two million dollars, is actually for the repaving of streets. We also, our sidewalk maintenance program is also funded from this, and we do some curb and gutter work and other things that are found within the right-of-way. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have regarding the state street budget. Thank you.
All right, we got the transportation department.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. One thing I'd like to say, kind of like they do on the radio, I'm a longtime listener, but first-time caller. So, I'd like to go over some of the accomplishments that occurred with the transportation department. We completed our modification of our system-wide operations, moving with Rover from thirty-minute, or from forty-five minutes to thirty minutes, or, excuse me, from thirty minutes to forty-five minute trips. That seems to be working a lot better for us, getting people on time and whatnot. We're currently, we have continued the environmental study for the new transit facility located on Main Street, West Main Street. Through part, part of our replacement of intersections, we, signalized intersections, we have upgraded sixteen from incandescent bulbs to LED fixtures, retrofit another nine pedestrian signals, that is a goal for us. I also began work on the major thoroughfare plan update. Rover ridership has sustained, whereas other ridership has fallen within the area, so kind of proud of that. Also, we've done a lot of support with the CIP, with a lot of Chris's projects. Some of the, I guess, our departmental goals moving forward, conduct, we're, hopefully we'll conduct and construct bidletting for the Stone River Greenways, extension phases four A and B, complete the environmental study, and the final, and begin the final design for the new transit facility, as well as continuing our replacement of our signalization with our intersections, and continue retrofitting our pedestrian signals. One of the things that we do have coming forward is, we're looking at doing an operational study of the Broad and Memorial intersection, which will, with the change that is occurring, it's, of course, gonna change all of the routes feeding in and out, so we definitely want to look into that, to be proactive when that facility opens. And we will continue to support capital improvement projects, and with that being said, here to answer any questions.
Mr. Kirk, where are we on the Walter Hill Greenway project?
It's being built.
They've already started on it?
It's started, it's started construction.
Wow. I need to get out more.
I ride by that on my bicycle quite a bit, and you can't really see them, but you can hear them back in the woods back there, but it's gonna be pretty impressive when you see what they're doing. Mr. Williams, Nate Williams, had said that it's the most environmentally conscious group that they've ever dealt with, as far as how they're putting everything through, and talking about adjusting the trail to be able to have less impact on different areas in the, along the trail, so it's gonna be pretty exciting.
Right, I actually worked with that contractor in my previous life, and they're a very good contractor.
Give me a tour. Will you give me a tour?
Sure.
Okay.
Do you get many requests for weekend Rover service?
Ma'am?
Do you get many requests for the weekend Rover service?
It's about, Nellie can help with this, it's about fifty-fifty with week, some weekend and extending the existing service that we currently have. Well, there was a study that was formed in two thousand and ten, is that right now? Eleven? And it, we'll probably do another study, another poll of the riders, to get more input, because things have changed a little bit since then.
Is the new hire for scheduling in the budget, or not in the budget?
I think we're gonna transition from, we've had a reliance on part-time drivers, and that's created some challenges for us to complete the schedule. So, I think we've got two drivers going from part-time to full-time, so it's not necessarily two new full positions we're carrying in the budget, but converting those part-time to full-time, so that we can better cover the hours of service.
Jim, I'd like to mention to you something, something I noticed in a town I was in recently. I really think the only thing that's really in play here is potentially Cherry Lane, but what I can reference is Rutherford Boulevard, and perhaps this might have something to do with veterans down the road, too, as it relates to planning. You know, Rutherford Boulevard, as a bypass, is, you know, not really a bypass to me anymore because of the number of intersections. I mean, there's just, you know, we're up to a whole lot. I'd rather just go right through the middle of town and deal with the bridge over Broad than to take Rutherford anymore. So, when we, when we look at Cherry Lane, when we look at what's gonna happen, what's, you know, out on Veterans Boulevard, for the whatever it's worth calling, from just, you know, Murfreesboro citizen, if there is a way that we can minimize that and actually maximize the traffic flow through those kinds of areas on our, what we would call kind of our bypass areas, that would really make me happy.
Yes, sir. We will definitely look into that. We have a plan, we have a plan for Rutherford Boulevard.
All that stuff will be happening way after I'm on the city council. I'm just telling you, as a, I mean, as a citizen, I mean, it's, you know, every time I go on Rutherford Boulevard, I'm thinking, man, this used to be awesome.
Right. Yeah, as part of, previously, as I was stating, as part of the Broad and Memorial study, we will also be looking at the southeast Broad, northwest Broad, O'Ford, and Memorial Corridor as well, Alcoa.
All right, thanks.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kirk. Urban Environmental Department. Ms. Holloway. It's page one-fifty-three.
I think it's still afternoon. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. I'm here today to present to you the 2017 urban environmental budget. But first, I'd like to kind of give you a brief overview of several of the department accomplishments under our current budget. We have completed Phase One of the Medical Center Parkway tree replacement project. We've removed eighteen large, dead or dying existing red maple trees, and replaced them with eighteen three-inch caliper Princeton Elms, which we firmly believe and think will be more adaptable and sustainable in that area. We've had quite a few problems with the red maple, and there are many planted in that area, but a lot of them suffer from that direct heat off the pavement. There's, they're in between the back of curb and the road, so, and, well, sidewalk and back of curb, and they're known to do that in many other places, too, so I think our choice of Princeton Elms is a good one. We also completed Phase Six and Seven of the downtown revitalization project. For now, this completes our planting plan for the ornamental trees, which we chose crepe myrtles for some color and some different texture and for more fall color. Takedowns and replacements are ongoing, of course, and on an as-needed basis, with shade or ornamental trees picked from the palette of our master plan for up there. We were doing pretty good until the ice storm hit, of course, and we did suffer a lot of damage in the downtown area, around the square especially, but we do have our ornamentals all in now, and they seem to be doing fine, so onward and upward there. Under our tree appreciation and education program, our team participated in the adventures in agriculture, and we gave away five-hundred willow oak seedlings, along with a lot of other educational materials, such as why tree topping is not such a great idea. We take a lot of material with us, there are a lot of people at that, that's in combination with the county, and it's at the Ag Center off of John Rice Boulevard, and there's hundreds and hundreds of people that come to that, so we get a lot of good exposure, and we get a lot of good questions, and we give out a lot of trees. Talking about our gardening in the city, for those that don't know, this is televised, filmed and televised by our city's communication department on Channel Three, and you can also watch it on YouTube. The first episode that we did this year was on the, on a question-and-answer kind of program on the Emerald Ash Bor that is fast approaching this area. The second episode was all about turf grass, and to date, so far, it's been the most popular episode we've ever done. Everybody wants to know about grass, when to start it, how to start it, you know, how to keep the weeds out, so that's been popular, and the whole program's been very popular. We get a lot of hits on that, and we just recently added a Facebook page for just Urban Environmental Department, too, so we can really keep people up to date on what we're doing, what's coming down the pike, and that sort of thing. I'd like to switch gears now and talk about our upcoming budget, and our, that we've got coming up. So, we will be continuing the Phase Two of the Medical Center Parkway replacement plan that will hopefully complete that project. We just did eighteen, that's a pretty big undertaking, because removal, taking the stumps out, and getting a large tree like that in, but under this 2017 budget, we plan on completing that project. There's more to take down and replace. We're going to begin an educational Emerald Ash Bor program with various other city departments to help them understand and identify the various damage that we will encounter with this really invasive bore. It's here, it's gonna cause considerable damage. My advice, don't plant ash trees at all. It loves other things to snack on, and actually, it has a very wide palette of plants, but the ash tree is, seems to be its favorite, thus the name Emerald Ash Bor. The state has been monitoring and setting traps for years and years, but it's here. It's gonna cause considerable damage. And then I'd like to turn to talk about our new kind of exciting project with the gardening in the city program. It is a new project that we're gonna be involved with at Murphy Springs, and I'd like for Kane Adams, who's our assistant director, to come up to the podium today and sort of just, and very briefly, present this program to you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the city council. As Ms. Holloway said, we're undertaking a project down at Murphy Springs, lost a lot of canopy over the years. I'm sure y'all are well aware of the parrot feather issue that we've been having. We're gonna try to do some cultural controls down there with some canopy and some water treatments and things like that, but at a Greenway Projects Committee meeting, Chairman Skyler had tasked Ms. Angela Jackson with Parks and Rec and myself to take a look into, you know, what's causing the canopy to decline and the parrot's feather, so forth. So, we sat down, had a meeting about it. We recruited Josh Upman with the Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Department, he does a lot of stormwater sampling, and I recruited Mr. Sam Huddleston also from the engineering department. And we've also brought in the state, so it is a multi-department undertaking. It's gonna take multiple years to get that canopy reestablished in that area and try to help control some of that parrot feather, instead of just having to spray it with chemicals all the time. But it is in its infancy at this moment. Everybody at the state level has been very helpful. They've gone out to different states to find out what they've done to control the parrot feather, but we will continue to update you as needed or at budget time to let you know how we're progressing and what our victories and failures have been. If anybody's got any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them, and if not, I'll turn it back over to Ms. Holloway.
So, Kane, how do you, you say parrot feather?
Parrot feather.
Parrot feather, okay. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I'll just add to that, we're going to use our gardening in the city program to film and complete multiple segments, so that we can show that to the public. If you go down there now, not only is the parrot feather so invasive in that area, but the tree canopy is really, really gone in many of those areas, just standing dead in the water. That presents a real challenge for any of us, but what's exciting is that we really want to do multi-series, you know, productions on this, and keeping the public, introducing it to the public, what it is, what we're trying to do, and, you know, try to really explain it, so to keep them really up to date with that, with our program. And with that, I will turn to you and see if you have any questions for me for the 2017 budget.
Ms. Holloway, when you, your handiwork is some of the first things that people see when they come in off Medical Center Parkway and the other exits off our interstate, and it makes us look good, and I want to thank you for it, for doing that. I know you've taken some grief over the amount of trees in Medical Center Parkway over the years, but it, it gives the city a special flair, and that we can't overlook those things.
Well, it does.
It's kind of like art. It's such a vital part of our lives that we, that we need to. Thank you for doing what you do.
Well, thank you, Mr. Young, and thank you for your service and our friendship, and I hope that we have very many more together. And you've always been one of the biggest champions, and I appreciate that, and kudos to everyone up here and to my staff. I couldn't do it without them, they make me look great. Each and every one of them worked so hard every day to accomplish, you know, everything from right-of-way clearing with trees, to planting, to mowing. We've got new projects that are, that we'll be taking on this year with, like I say, the new police department and things like that, very, very large project for us, and we're excited about it, though. We like to make everything look good.
And Ms. Holloway, I will echo, I know from many of us that deal with your staff on an administrative level, you've got some, some good people who work in your office that are working with landscapers and contractors and developers that, you know, at the end, work to make projects not only look good for the owners, but look, make projects look good for the community, so they do a fine job.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll pass that along. Thank you so much.
Ms. Holloway?
Yes.
I've been on your board for quite some time now, and I've enjoyed every moment of it.
Thank you.
The, one thing that has concerned me in the last year or so, we've had a posting for a tree climber, and it's become more than plain to see that whatever it is we're posting for is posting for is not in the price range in which it's going to attract somebody to come and take the job.
You're right.
What, what do we need to do as a council? Because if, is it in the budget currently?
The tree climber.
At an increased expense.
The tree trimmer is in there. The budget, though, the salary range is, is what's stymying us.
Right. And it doesn't matter if we've got the number on here. If we can't find anybody who's going to do it, then we need to seriously look at what it's going to take to get somebody, because it has, it has gone on to the point now that we have gotten into a safety issue, because I'm concerned that we've got people doing things that they're not qualified and certified to do. And it's not that we don't appreciate their effort, but, but I, I think that there's a risk involved when we're asking them to possibly put themselves in a situation that they really shouldn't be putting theirself into, because we, we do have a position that's available and open and, and quite clearly, we're still not at the point to which we can attract anybody, because it's been posted for so long that we've gone, I guess this is the second growing season that we've been without one. And, and certainly, if we can do anything about that between now and when we approve this budget, I'd sure appreciate it.
Okay. Well, we've had some meetings with Human Resources to see what we might be able to do with the hiring range, so we'll follow back up with that and respond back to you.
Okay.
Yeah, and I just want to echo that. I've been working with HR and Mr. Lyons. We discussed it during our first budget review, and I've talked to Mr. Crumley, and I've actually talked to other cities, too. So, we've got an idea. We know Jane Corbin in HR actually did a survey in Nashville of private tree companies to get, you know, salaries and ranges of starting and salaries that they, that they pay out and stuff. And we do need it. It's a very critical part of our team. Running two people on a bucket truck, two groundsmen, you really should have three. And so, and we are so proactive as well, that most people, I don't think, realize how much, we're, we're working grid by grid by grid, too. It's not just reactive. We're just trying to be, you know, proactive as well with that.
And, and I'll echo what Mr. Young said about how beautiful our roadways are in Murphysboro, and not only that, but our downtown area where you put the baskets and stuff up that require quite a bit of maintenance and upkeep, and the job that you do of keeping the sidewalks cleared off and stuff, it's, it's impressive, and we appreciate everything that your department does.
Thank you, Councilman Smither. I certainly appreciate that. We all do. Any other questions?
We will move to the Civic Plaza, Page 158.
Well, it's pretty standard quo. If you have any questions about it, I'll certainly be happy to answer them.
Ms. Holloway, is there any suggestion that you would have, not from a landscaping perspective, but, you know, I continue to, when I talk to people, to say that our Civic Plaza is one of the, the most unused but best jewels that we have in the downtown area. Is there anything that you see from a functional standpoint that we could do to promote that area a little more? I mean, maybe Food Truck Friday on the Civic Plaza?
Pardon me?
Food Truck Friday on the Civic Plaza?
Well, actually, this year, we probably have, have had more and have more scheduled than we have in many years. I think probably, I might be the only one left that was here from the very beginning when that was designed. And we do have some restraints up there that I don't think everyone's aware of. It wasn't really meant to drive on. Looking back on the old Civic Plaza, the brick was on cement, and so, but we had, as many of us still remember this part, we had a lot of problems with the Civic Plaza. We had to take all the plants off. They did all that reconstruction, and they put the bricks back on sand so that we could have good filtration. That poses a problem with weight. I mean, I think we've always had some concerns with weight, multiple weight on there. We have figured out ways to drive on it, but when you spin or turn or get anything heavy, it shifts those bricks, and they're starting to divot. So, that in and of itself, sort of, it wasn't really designed as a drive-on plaza, but more as a people gathering place. I mean, we had Bob Dole come through years ago. We had five, six thousand people up there, and it was, you remember, you were here for that. That was quite a challenge. But that being said, we have more people. I think our fee schedule is actually low for that. It's certainly not intended to be a moneymaker, but we're, these, we've got a lot scheduled. We've got two exciting projects. I got a call today from Pillsbury. They're doing a 5K run on a Saturday, but they wanted to back up and do it, use the plaza for that Friday, so, as well, which they hadn't put on their application. But as we know, we've got the Tennessee Art Commission coming up for a big event up there. That's on the 7th of June. Then July 8th, we've got the Guinness World Book trying to do-si-do and break the world record on the square dancing that will start there. So, we've got some really big events coming up on the plaza. And, and we still do have a little bit of, I think, in working with this, when those, those functions are during the week, we have to be very cognizant of keeping the building open and access to this building. But if you have any other ideas, you know, I did a PSA several years ago about it and got that out and tried to, to push it, but I think it's just, more and more groups need to, we've got our Facebook page now, and so, we're really going to start hitting it with these big events that we're doing up there. Anybody else have any suggestions for it?
It seems to me, and I've worked with Jennifer on a couple of projects there, there seems to be an attitudinal change from the city, at least I observed that, that we are more cognizant of, we have a jewel, and we're not using it as much as we can. And Mr. Lyons and I have talked about this, about it's terribly underutilized. So, I think we're going to do everything we can to utilize it more. We obviously know you can't have a lot of heavy traffic on it, but you've got a good area all the way around the perimeter that you can park vehicles and trucks and things. So, I see nothing but good movement to more utilizing the plaza in the future.
And we've talked, I think Mrs. Moody and I, and Mr. Lyons, and those of us have talked about the guidelines. You know, there's some changes that need to take place. Those guidelines are twenty, since we moved into this building. So, there's some changes that need to be made that probably will help people utilize that space a bit better.
All right, we'll move to the parking garage.
Thank you.
Page 161.
I'll take that one, Mayor. This, again, is a fairly straightforward budget. There's actually a budget decrease. This year, we did some maintenance work on the fire protection sprinkler system in the, in the garage this year that we do not need to do this upcoming year. So, happy to answer any questions.
I know this is a crazy question, but we've got, like, a ton of cars in the parking garage that, like, some have collected, like, two inches of dust.
It has been an ongoing challenge.
I, I didn't stop and ask the gentleman yesterday, but there's a truck and a commercial vehicle parked on the side of the road, and he came over and started the truck for a few minutes and then left. And so, how do we, how do we deal with that?
That has been an ongoing challenge. Obviously, we provide free parking to the public. The garage gets a lot of turnover, but we've had some, some businesses and other institutions who have come and parked their vehicles here, but then they may come get them on the weekends. And we've had some others that have come here and parked some vehicles. I worked with Mr. Smitherman on a vehicle that was there for a long time, and it was, as they say, mechanically disadvantaged. We were able to get that one moved out. But it has been something of a challenge. It doesn't look good. And, you know, we, one of the things we want to make sure is that the parking garage feels safe, and, you know, that can start to lend a feeling that it's, it's not safe. So, it's really been a police department, if it's not, if it looks, you know, inoperable and there's no current tags on it, we have tried to make contact with the owner. In some cases, we've tried to contact the owner, and we can't find them. There's no address and owner coming back to the, to the tag, so.
And the parking lots are meant for short-term daily parking, though, right? Not, I mean, when we, when we provide that to the public, that's, that's the purpose of that. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I mean, this isn't, it's not a place to park your junk car.
Correct.
I mean, that's, that's pretty clear to the, to everybody involved, right?
Yeah, what I, I guess maybe we could talk to legal to see if there's some additional ordinance regulations that we could lay down to further limit that.
What I've noticed, and I know, I don't know if you guys have noticed this now, but this parking garage where it used to not be as crowded, I mean, most of the time, when you go through, you're driving around for a little bit, especially on those perimeter six, six or 10 aisles that you're, it's hard to find a place to park sometimes.
Some of the parking will, will get a little bit of relief when the police department moves to Highland Avenue. There's police vehicles there, as well as the staff of the police department.
Yeah.
So, we will free up some capacity with the moving of the police department.
We might look at the parking ride, see what, see what they have on the books for the parking rides. I'm sure there's something similar there, too. They have to have the same issues.
Okay. Good suggestion. Thank you.
All right. Other General Governmental Fund, Page 215.
Let me take you to Page 217. That may be clearer. This is the account where things that don't fit in other places fall. You'll notice things in here from our contribution to retirees' health insurance, our losses on property taxes and other uncollectible taxes, unforeseen, our contribution to schools from the mixed drink tax, just a variety of different types of expenses, none of which fit in one of the operating departments. There is very little change in this fund. You see a big decrease under wellness benefit. I think Human Resources will talk some more about that when their program comes up. Well, they were there on the last program, so I should talk about that. Wellness benefit is moving to the insurance fund. The program will change this calendar year, and those dollars are shipping off to the insurance account for the employee's self-funded health plan.
Mr. Crumley will do debt service.
Let me take you to the very top of Page 225. The very first line is the contribution from the general fund to the debt service fund. All of the debts of the city are paid out of this account. You can see an increase there of a little over $4.4 million. That is your $79 million bond issue that we sold roughly 45 days ago. It's hard to say. We've had a good year with the debt service account, but you look back, the city's bond rating upgraded in the last 60 days, the successful sale of that $79 million. We very successfully refunded water and sewer bonds Monday. Will be prepared to refund some more general obligation bonds with significant savings in the not-too-distant future. Almost the entirety of the change in this particular account is due to our new bonds. I'll be glad to try to answer any questions.
Mr. Crumley, so counting notes and bonds, it looks like that we've got $27 million, 27.2 million that will be retiring in debt this year?
That's correct.
Yes, sir. And that's pretty standard. You know, the city has chosen 15 years for its retirement of debt. That puts us into a very rapid repayment of that obligation. On average, over the next 10 years, we'll repay about 85% to 90% of the debts that we owe.
Any questions for Mr. Crumley?
Comparing ourselves with other cities, our debt service ratios are really good.
All of our ratios are within the benchmarks that City Council established in its financial policies. Because we are a very rapid-growing city, we've incurred more debt than a lot of our counterparts in the state of Tennessee, because we choose to pay it back very fast. The percentage of the annual operating budget that the city puts toward repayment of debt is much larger than all but one other city I know of in the state of Tennessee. So, yes, we're very well managed in terms of the debt portfolio, but we do look a little different than most of the other cities in the state.
But, you know, one of the things I think that's important to, to keep in mind, and while that rapid repayment, just is if you borrowed your mortgage and you paid it back over 15 years compared to 30, obviously, that note looks bigger each month, but you're going to, you know, save considerable amount on interest. What Mr. Crumley mentioned at the beginning was the city did get a bond rating upgrade this year. If you look at the scale, there's 18 steps on that scale. We're at number 17 with only one more place to move up. And so, I think that's a real credit to the strength that the credit market sees in the city on how it's managed financially.
What's the term on most of the debt? What, is it 20, 30? What, what is?
Most Tennessee cities for big projects like roads and schools are selling 30-year debt. Very few cities that I know of in the 20-year market. There are a few other communities like us that choose a 15-year repayment.
Are we still within all of our ratios on debt service?
We're within every ratio. As we look forward one year, we don't know exactly how to, to propose the next bond issue. Obviously, there's a number of factors that will come into consideration there. The biggest one being, how fast can we spend the $79 million we just borrowed? The Highland Avenue Police Headquarters is the largest part of that. It's almost 50% of that total bond issue. But there are other projects that typically, as we build streets and we run into other things, sometimes get pushed back and delayed. So, if there is a bond sale in 2017, size of that is yet to be determined. Our commitment would be no bond issue that would cause us to exceed any of those ratios that are in your financial policies.
I mean, a good example is the West Park. We've, we've already funded and borrowed for the West Park, and we're still trying to finalize the land.
Yes. That's $6 million in the most recent bond issue, and that, that may take a little while for that money to get expensed. Your capital improvement funds on Page 240. Again, these are projects that are primarily funded from grants and other outside sources. They may have some city funds in them, but they're primarily not general fund dollars. To give you an example of some of the projects that you would see here, you've got the energy program that is ongoing in city schools. You've got the CTC, the Community Technology Center, going at the Hobgood Campus. You've got other projects such as Bloomfield Links, where Kristy Houston has funded the money to build a pavilion slash restroom facility at Bloomfield. Smaller projects, primarily other folks' money paying for these in this account.
Okay, we'll move to the TMBF Bond Fund.
Page 243. This is the account where your capital projects that we are engaged in is expensed. This is where the $79 million we just borrowed will flow through in the expense category. So, you can see that we've put in there 80, just a little over $80 million for the current year. I think it would be a dream of Melissa and mine, and probably most department heads, if we could get $80 million out the door in the next fiscal year. But that will be the goal, is to try to make those projects for which you've already borrowed the funds move as quickly as they can be efficiently, effectively, and safely built.
Can you interest me to run? Okay, thank you, Mr. Crumley. All right, we'll move to the Senior Citizens Department, page 175.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I want to start out, it's been a busy day for myself, and I was proud to see the mayor out at our site today. We started out doing Springapalooza with the dunking booth and then straight into council this evening, so I'll start and talk a little bit about our accomplishments this last year in 2016. We were very excited for several of our staff. We talked a lot the last time I was here about evidence-based programming, and we, in this last year, we had over four of our staff that completed training in a couple of different areas that we want to talk about. One was our stepping-on program, which is a fall prevention program for older adults. We had two of our staff members attend that training that was presented in Nashville and were able to come back. We've had two of those programs already presented this year and have slated for the upcoming year or two more. We also had two of our staff, Cindy Thomas and Dee Brown, to complete caregiver training. Caregivers kind of jumped to the top of our radar this last year of the importance of older adults and the caregivers that are caring for them, and so we were, we were very impressed with this evidence-based program. So we finished up about two months ago. We will present our first class starting in June to a lot of the caregivers that we already have there at the center, and then hopefully for community partners out in the community that might be interested in this program, for our staff to go out to maybe some local churches or sponsor some events at some civic groups that will be able to do some of this training in the community. We also were, one of the things that we were excited about this last year was producing a TV show called Life After 60. We really wanted to show a different light of senior centers, seniors in the community. So Life After 60 is a quarterly program that we present, programs not only going on at the staff at the center. We've also had the head of aging for the state of Tennessee in, talking about aging for the whole state of Tennessee in our TV program this year. And so we were very excited to work with TV3 and present those shows. Those have been very successful in presenting the seniors in a different light to the community. Excuse me. We also were very proud this year to be hosting the Tennessee State Directors Conference. We had over 75 senior centers from across the state just last week here in Murfreesboro, from Memphis to Knoxville, from Chattanooga all the way to Clarksville. A lot of those senior center directors came in to hear Tennessee Commission Head Jim Schulman talk about the future of senior centers, talk about the future of senior services for the state. We also, in that program, had training from, TOSHA was there, we had the Attorney General's Office there, talking about programs that we can do to better help and save our seniors from a lot of scams that are going on in the state of Tennessee and right here in Rutherford County, and here in the city of Murfreesboro. We also were part of doing the Brain Games. We talked about this a little bit last year. Tennessee started a program for seniors called the Senior Brain Games. Our seniors at St. Clair, they were called the Mindbenders. They participated in several teams across our area that competed, and the state championship for that is held in Morris in Tennessee. And we will be coming up with our team kind of presenting in the next year in those championship games, even to the point that we've got some state recognition out of some TV shows that are being produced about active aging and how Brain Games and different types of things for the aging will be better presented in our communities. We also improved our physical fitness programs this last year, introducing several new pieces of fitness equipment. In that process, we were able to present over 60-plus new programs where, that were in physical fitness, education, and health promotion. We were very excited for the staff to be doing that. We look forward to them presenting even more programs in the upcoming year. I'll move into our goals for this upcoming year. One of the things that we were fortunate to receive and look forward to is a remodel of our facility. We're going to be replacing and improving our heating and air system there at the center. We'll be working on some of the lighting. We'll also be working on moving our very front collection of information up to the very front of the building, kind of like a welcome center. That will be very great to us. I was glad to hear the talk about getting credit card devices for us to be able to use. It's very helpful for our seniors to be able to use those devices and that technology for them to pay for maybe programs that they do, trips that they may go, go on, and different things that they participate there at the center. We also will be working on some technology and training for our staff. A couple of things, we're, we're wanting to get some of our staff some more physical fitness training. We also are looking into some of the verbal defense and influence and others, and some technology training for just our staff only. And we are looking at a partnership to introduce a scholarship program for some of our seniors that are lower-income seniors that may not be able to afford even some of their lower prices that we have on some of our event, that that would be a partnership with some of our community, Rutherford County Council on Aging, some other departments that are interesting and sponsoring some of our seniors in doing some activities there at St. Clair. We look forward to serving you and serving the city. Our, our staff work very hard. We're dedicated to, to serving the older adults here in our community 60-plus, and I'll be open for any questions you have concerning our budget for 2017.
You all do do a great job.
It's a busy place.
One thing that stuck out to me when you were talking about your staff training and in your bullet point, you were talking about training on senior bullying. Do we have seniors that bully?
We do. We've just had, that was one of the programs that come out of the state conference. They introduced a program for all of our staff to be trained on, so we agreed, several of the senior centers in our district and across our state agreed to produce that program that was coming out of the state, and so we'll be one of the sites not only training our staff about it, about the possibilities of what's going on, and so that we can be better to handle those issues.
Interesting.
It does happen. A lot of senior centers, a lot of senior housing, anywhere, you don't consider it being just, you hear about it being a youth and young, young adults, but it does happen.
You had a great crowd today.
It was fun.
It was.
I was a little damp, but.
Mr., Connie was in the dunking booth, so.
There's a few of those seniors that have got pretty good arms. I was impressed.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, well, now move to the Golf Course Department, page 187.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. First of all, I'd like to clear the air a little bit about that comment that was considered a joke. It was, Mayor, it was just a compliment to how well that you're aging in such a stressful position. And also, along with beloved children's character that's at the top of his profession, so that's how that was meant. And if, if y'all bought that, I'll move into the budget. Some of the accomplishments for the Golf Department this year, I'm proud to say that this is the third year that we've had an increase in rounds at all the facilities, and to see that that's trending back up is, is good news for us all. We have implemented our new website for the golf course. We have pages for all three of the golf courses, Old Fort VA and Bloomfield. And on there, you can get a list of all of our rates, the, the calendar of events, whether it be with tournaments or maintenance issues. Also, we're, are going to be working with the IT department here shortly, since we've got the, the licensing they have for the, the drones to fly, where we're going to have a, a video flyover of all the holes and stuff that'll be listed, so when people are looking at the course, they can, they can get an idea of what they're coming to, to see, especially if they're out of town. We have had several events that we've already had this year and a lot more upcoming, but the Southern Athletic Association just completed their men's and women's championships in April. That was the second year for that, and that, that was very exciting. Schools from, I believe, five different states here in town for four days. Also, we've hosted the Lady Raider Invitational, the college event for the, the last five years, in many company and group outings. We just finished up with the Chamber of Commerce Annual Event just last week, and it was very, two weeks ago, it was very successful. As mentioned earlier by Mr. Crumley, we have acquired some funding for the building to be, to start at Bloomfield. We're at a point now where that has been approved through building codes and planning, so the bids are being written for that, so we're excited about getting that up. Also, we put on with a subcontract last year, independent contractor last year, Mr. Jex Wilson, to help us with our junior golf development and lessons for, for the public and to run all their programming, especially at Bloomfield, and a lot of it's at Old Fort as well. Old Fort and the, and the programs that were at Bloomfield with, with his help were, we won the Junior Leadership Award for the PGA in Middle Tennessee last year, and we're a finalist in the state, and we're excited about that. We also were, I reported last year that we were in six of the ESP programs with six of the elementary schools last year. We're scheduled to be, to continue on with those six and move into the other six schools in the fall. Also started a pilot program in the PE classes at John Pitterd Elementary, and also at Reeves-Rogers, and to date, I believe it's right at 1,400, 1,500 kids have been introduced to golf just through those pilot programs. Very excited about working with the school system. We have partnerships now. We're trying to get in to, to get some sponsors and some partnerships with our junior programs. Proud to announce that we are, signed a contract, I believe this week, with Coca-Cola to come on board for $5,000 a year for the next five years, so it's good to have those long-term commitments. Also with Ford of Murfreesboro on our Ace the Majors contest, if you hadn't heard about that, go to our Facebook page or website and, and look at that, but it's a contest that we're having with all the majors with golf, with the Masters, US Open, PGA, and British Open, along with, this year golf is being brought back, first time in a very long time, to the Olympics. So those weekends of those major events, we're having a closest-to-the-hole contest to, for folks to qualify over at our Bloomfield Links, and it's a fundraiser, and at the end of the year, there will be, those 30 folks will compete for a chance at a hole-in-one to win a new Ford Mustang, and the closest-to-the-hole winner, if we don't have a hole-in-one, will win a, a new set of Titleist Irons. So excited about that. Also, Textbook Brokers, a local company here in town, has graciously sponsored our first session of our Bloomfield Linksters for, for all the jerseys and things that go along with prizes and things for supporting that. Excited to say that our signups for our Bloomfield Linksters alone has exceeded over 70 just for the first league, and that's just six to 13-year-old kids. We've implemented this year for the first time the Murfreesboro Junior Golf Association, which is specifically for middle school, high school golfers, and a lot of opportunities for them to, to join that and get opportunities to practice and play, not only at Bloomfield, but also at, at Old Fort and the VA as far as use, use of the driving range at a discount rate. PGA Junior League, last year we had 12 kids that were on our one team. This year, we have two teams that have 14 each on that team, and it's a travel team where we play different courses in the area with Stones River, go to Riverbend and play Shelbyville, Telehome at Lakewood, and also Willowbrook in, in Manchester. Excited about that. A new program also is called a JAGS event. We have one every month, and it's a junior adult games, and we come up with, we have one each month that a junior and an adult can play together in just, just a fun type event, trying to grow the game, not just through individual competition, but also through team competition and really what the, most of us and most of you would, would have played in, more of a team or scramble-type event, more so than just some of the higher-levered junior events. Some of the goals for next year, obviously, are to continue to grow rounds, continue to make these programs better before we start expanding too much, but everything is going well there. Our major budget is pretty much the same, except for the purchase, the main purchase this year is for a, a new fleet of carts, replacement fleet on those carts. We're excited to be able to start with a new visage system that'll be on there. It'll allow us to control cart traffic, also messaging to the golfers for weather situations, and eventually potential for advertisement on those as well. It is anticipated if, if that, if this budget does go through and that cart purchase is made to replace our cart fleet, that we would have a $1 increase in the cart fee. It has been several years since that happened. That $1 cart fee will, will more than pay for the visage system that has to be put, that will be put on there that'll be golfer-enhanced. It'll have the GPS system on it for the, the golfer performance on the course. A lot of potential there. And the additional purchases would be just annual purchases that we have in a rotation for maintenance equipment, such as greens mowers and weed eaters and things of that nature. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I just want to say I was out on the greenway Sunday, and, and of course, I wound up out by the golf courses and riding bikes and rode by the, the Bloomfield, kids out there having a blast, which is exactly why it was built. It, it was very impressive. Of course, the other course looks immaculate as always. You do a fantastic job of maintaining and keeping it up, and I think that course is something that we're extremely proud of, and we, and, and for the greenway system, there must have been 1,000 people on the greenway that day, because, I mean, there were people everywhere, and, and kayaking must be the hottest new sport in the world because the river was full of kayakers. So it's, it's exciting to ride the greenway system right now and see how many people are out there using it, but, and certainly in your area over there around Kids Castle and the golf courses. Just people everywhere, so find a job and appreciate everything you do to maintain that facility.
Thank you. I'd like to, like everyone else, echo the fact of, of our staff. I've been, been with the city a few years, and I will say the golf course at Old Fort is about as good a shape as I've ever seen it, and the staff has done a fantastic job and couldn't do any of this without them. They, they work hard every day. The fact that we're able to bring some outside events in, such as these college events and even some company events statewide, also in negotiations, starting just yesterday with Treveka and the, the Great Midwest Athletic Conference, maybe having a fall tournament here with 13 teams coming in also. So being able to contribute to not just the golf piece, but having people come in and visit the city and, and all the other things that go along with it, it's, it makes it easy to be able to sit down, and they want to know what else they can do, what the kids can do when they're here, and be able to point out all the recreational possibilities of greenways and all the things that Murfreesboro has to offer. It's, it makes it a pretty easy sell, and all those things go into them bringing an event like that here.
Thank you, Ms. Wilkins.
Thank you.
Move the Airport Fund.
Mayor, and members of the City Council, occasionally, when we have a different aircraft come in or, or just an event out at the airport, I like to take a quick picture and send it to Jim and Rob and Jennifer and show them the activity that's going on the airport in the last couple of days. It's one of those days that deserves a picture. With all the activities that are happening in Murfreesboro, you could certainly see the activity at the airport with a ramp full of aircraft, and they were coming in for business. They were coming in to do business at the airport with some of our companies and aircraft sales and upgrades of aircraft, but also with springfling. Just this year particularly, we've had a number of aircraft coming in from all four corners of the state, coming into Murfreesboro, and our job is to see where they're going, and then if their team wins, trying to get them a hotel. And that's not always an easy task this week. I also appreciate a day like this because last year, at this I also appreciate a day like this, because last year, at this time, we were in major construction, over a longer period of time of, of construction at the airport than I think we've ever been in, in recent history at the airport. So days of not being able to fly is very much appreciated today. We came through a lo, a long process, but a very great-looking airport came out of that, all that work. We're still working on that. We're still pretty much operating on the runway length that we had back then. We're getting closer and closer every day to establishing the approaches on the north end, through, through the environmental sides and through working with MED to lower some pulls on Dejarnet Boulevard, but those things are all moving forward. We're also stepping forward into this new year, looking into the terminal building. In every meeting that we have with our consultants, we get closer and closer to focusing in that vision of what that facility will look like. And it's a daunting task, because it's something that's going to be here for fifty years or more. We don't know what all the purposes that this facility might be and hold for us in this community. We certainly want it to be a place not just to serve our airport and flying community, but our community in general, with some good meeting rooms and, and facilities that even our university can take, take pride in and utilize for their very recognized aerospace program. So I see in this year some things that are not necessarily on this budget, but moving into this budget, and if we do our job right, I'll be coming back to you to make some changes with Melissa and Jim's help and Anna's help, to, to bring some of these things forward. Not only when we look at the terminal, part of the daunting task is not just the terminal, but that building also creates other issues and, and other opportunities for us, and other engineering things that we have to come around is parking. It may impact our fuel farm. There are companies like Mike Jones Aircraft that are needing more space, so that is right in line with where we're going to be doing work on the terminal. So there's, there's hangars that are going to be built and some ramps that will be probably coming to you very quickly. One of our new tenants on the field is Lifelight. Last year at this time, they, they finally came onto the airport. That's another facility that we have some funds off to the side to serve their area and get them on the, where they need to be with their hangar on the north end of the field. Definitely a big, great partner to have on our field and to serve our community. Another asset or a good thing that's coming on with this budget is, for me, is some additional assistance there in full-time position, in, in administrative assistant, that I'm looking forward to. Just through changes of time and regulations and the amount of activity that we've had, that position is going to be a real blessing here at the airport. Otherwise, I have no other questions. There will be some changes that we'll be bringing. I've been working with Anna on some changes that just didn't get brought in, that will show up in the first reading regarding some debt service and some other federal and state funding that's going to happen next year that didn't quite make it this year. Be glad to take any questions.
Well, it's my first year to serve on this particular, with this group, and I just want to say, not only, you know, it seems like every department, we, we get amazing bang for the buck that we spend, but I'm telling you, I got a chance to see what was accomplished out at our airport this year and get a seat, even though it's, I've driven by it all my life and even flown out of it before all of my life, but it is amazing, the work that's done out there, and a lot of it is due to the person that stands before you tonight. Chad does an amazing job out at our airport, and I'll tell you, the folks that are on our committee too, the Airport Commission, are so committed to doing the right thing and finding the, the most appropriate solutions to difficult problems. And in the last couple of years, I'm not sure I understood everything that was being discussed, but I can tell the passion for what, for the, using your, their experience to find the solution, the right solution for our airport. There's a lot of people committed to, to do the right thing at, at our airport, and a lot of it is because of Chad's work and his, his commitment to his job, and I'm glad to see, the budget's got him an extra person involved. I think that will really help his, his workload.
Thank you, Mr. Chad.
Sure. Thanks, Chad.
Thank you.
I've got my slide shark is already up and running, Darren, so.
Yeah, we got to get that going here.
We now have the Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Department, page seventy-five.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Hopefully, this is going to work out this time around, and you'll be able to follow the presentation on your, on your iPads. I think they should be able to come up on the screen as well. This worked earlier. Can we try it again? Yeah, I popped it. Yeah. Okay. Now you maybe will see it on your iPad and not on the screen. Technology.
All right, in the paraphrasing, the Ken Honeycutt School of Questions, any questions?
I came in here, well, I came in here earlier, and I'm, I'm not kidding, I was, we looked and we, I did, and we had it working, and it's just down and then back up. There's just a connection issue here with the, with this here. Oh, there it is, okay. Sometimes is it, is it really worth it sometimes, y'all? You just look at me and go, Darren, just come on, just get up, start talking, quit with the, quit with the graphics and stuff. Sorry. I really do this more for me so I can stay on task, because I, I get long-winded if I don't have a script to follow, so thank you for being patient with me. All right, so I want to go through the numbers, feel a little compelled to go through the numbers, since we've got a $50 million budget this year. If you look at the FY seventeen revenues versus expenses, what we've effectively got is around $44 million in what I would call rate revenue, or revenue that's generated from water and sewer sales. In conjunction with that, if you look at what we're looking at on expenses, and you see the sewer, the water, the billing and collections, our admin in general and debt service, along with capital expenditures, the capital expenditures aren't really considered operating expenses, but they, they, since they are fixed assets, but at the same time, they really are necessary items for the, for the budget for the physical year, that's around $40.5 million. So what makes up the difference? I'm going to tag a new phrase here and call this growth revenue. We've got what we have, TAP revenue and system development charges or connection fees that really are somewhat of a guess. We, for example, we guessed that we'd have four and a half million dollars of TAP revenue this year, and we ended up with $9 million in TAP revenue. That was double of what we expected, and so it's a really, it's, it's a, it's an outshoot of, offshoot of growth. So what we do with that growth is we put it to, I would guess, growth, growth expense. So it's really a transfer into a reserve bucket that deals with future projects, large repair and replacement projects, and things that would offset debt. And we've actually got several projects identified as sinking funds that we know there's going to be some major expenditures, and we really don't want to have to go out and get a loan to do that. We want to pay cash. So when I say that, we've got a five-year CIP that's in the budget, that's around a $50 million expenditure that's anticipated to be paid with this reserve bucket or by cash, where, where we will not have to go out and get any debt or loans. And of that, we have about $21.5 million that, that are sinking funds, and those are highlighted here. Same with stormwater, we have about a $2.85 million expected revenue on the stormwater fees. I'll go through the expenses fairly quickly, but labor and benefits are really the stormwater folks at the Water and Sewer Department. We've got public outreach and education, transportation costs, the general fund services, this is where we reimburse the streets and engineering and for the, the stormwater folks that Raymond just brought up, that are going to be working for doing the stormwater repairs. This is kind of a reimbursement into the general fund for the services rendered. We've got outside services, rate-funded capital, stormwater sewer repair, this is really more of a, a maintenance outside services. And then we do have a little bit of, of excess funds that we do transfer into the working capital reserves. And again, we have a five-year capital improvement plan that shows the stormwater paying for all these projects in cash, so there will be no loans or debt incurred, and that's around 5.75 million over the next five years. So that, just to show you where that excess funds goes, we do have earmarked projects for the, to be, to be paid for out of those reserve funds. Not really going to go much into accomplishments, I've got those listed out, just to be more expeditious, wanted to talk about the goals coming up. A lot of the, a lot of the goals we have this year are ongoing or carryover from last year as well, so we had our advanced metering infrastructure that's been ongoing. We've got about another eight, twelve months of installs there, where over thirty-five percent of our meters are installed. That really targets some of our effective utility management attributes, customer satisfaction, financial viability, and operational optimization. We have a continued expansion of the Sinking Creek Treatment Plant, and we're looking at replacing three biosolids presses. And one of the big challenges that we'll have along with the city is the solid waste issue, and we want to make sure that we find a sustainable path forward on how we dispose of our biosolids. We are landfilling our biosolids right now, and that is at no expense, and at certain point, we're going to have to figure out exactly what to do with our biosolids moving forward. So this is a community sustainability, infrastructure strategy, and performance and product quality, the attributes that are targeted there. Our Water Resource Integration Plan, which is kind of a companion document to the Murfreesboro 2035 Comprehensive Plan, we are looking at ongoing investigations of effluent disposal, land application at the farms, expanded effluent discharge into the river. The river's in great shape. I'm hoping to bring good news to the council at some point about how good of condition the, the river is in at a certain point. I'll, I'll just leave that, leave you in bated breath for that. But in continued partnering with industrial, agricultural, and development partners, we're really working well with General Mills and Indian Hills, and they're collaborating well together. We're also working well with Beatty Farms and some other agricultural folks, and we're looking for all options to dispose of this effluent in a beneficial way, not only for us, but for development that occurs in the city. So again, it's enterprise resiliency, water resource, sustainability, and stakeholder understanding and support. We've got, we're, we're doing a short-term rollout paperless development plan, some middle solution. We've been working on that with City Hall. We also are trying to look at maybe developing some living dashboards with some of Power Business Intelligence. It's a really neat solution. So again, enterprise resiliency and stakeholder understanding and support are the attributes targeted. I left this one, I put this one at first, employee and leadership development, that's always a tough one, and I just got something in, in an email. This wasn't in the budget. Haven't really talked to HR yet, but we got something that's from Strategic Government Resources that I want to go over with Glenn, and, and they've got some really good-looking online courses for customer service, pruning negativity, time management through SMART Goals. They've also got some supervisory courses on managing change, supervisor as teacher, supervisor as motivator, and leadership courses, you know, lessons from a coach, hidden bias, and how much do you know. So it looked like a really good curriculum, and obviously this will get vetted through City Manager's Office and HR. Don't want to surprise anybody, but it looked like some good stuff. It's always a struggle, you always want to invest in our, in our people, right, and get them training and get them elevated so that they have better skills to deal with, obviously, the, the personnel interactions. Our next big project, it's the Northeast Regional Pump Station. Mr. Lyons has been tired of the Southwest heading on all the projects here recently, so for the next five to seven years, we're just going to have Northeast projects everywhere, so we'll just try to wear that term out. But this is, again, is a big project that we're trying to pay cash for and not incur debt. It, it collapses or it, it abandons three major pump stations, two on Compton Road, one on Dejarnet, and kind of does an end run around to the plant, hopefully eliminating a lot of infiltration overflows and some things that aren't happening, so give us increased capacity through the Sinking Creek Interceptor. And kind of our next big mission, this is kind of something that just came out as well, Water Resources Utility of the Future Today, that's a joint recognition program, and it's something that's tied to effective utility management, but I'll read what it's about, but this, this recognition program seeks to reach deep, deeply into the water sector to form and motivate a community of like-minded, self-identified water utilities engaged in advancing resource efficiency and recovery, developing proactive relationships with stakeholders, and establishing resilient, sustainable, and livable communities. We think that Murfreesboro Water is a great candidate to apply for this Utility of the Future Recognition Program, so we're going to be endeavoring to fill that out and hopefully be recognized as a utility of the future today. So, oh, did I go, I went backwards. Last slide was supposed to be questions.
One of these days you'll be able to get it.
I just totally messed that up. All right, well, questions? Turn this off.
Darren, I know we're all looking forward to hearing about the river quality and can't hardly wait, but the, I was reading the other day about the landfill, and as it continues to fill up, the slopes and the angles of the peak of the landfill is going to become more and more of a concern with what we put in there from our solid waste.
Yes, sir.
Is, is, is there a cutoff point? I mean, we're looking at maybe eight years, hopefully, out of the landfill. I don't think we've got that long. Do you have any kind of a number that predicts how much longer we'll be able to continue to use the landfill?
Well, with our recent publicity on, on how we were maybe contributing to some odors out there, I had some chances to talk with some folks, which by the way, I don't, we, we make up, the biosolids that we place at the landfill make up about two, two percent or three, two to three percent of the overall tonnage that's put there every day, so we, and we don't have any biosolids odors at, at our wastewater plant, so I don't know how being a two to three percent of total at, at the landfill would cause the odor, so didn't mean to go down that rabbit trail, but just wanted to get that out there. TDEC has told us that we actually, as biosolids, have lesser timeframe than the city because of the slopes, and the biosolids will not be able to hold some of those slopes like conventional solid waste will. We have been told five years. We better have a solution within five. If the life of the, of the landfill is looking around eight, I thought we had a little more time, and obviously, when I had this conversation with TDEC, and in his expert opinion, we had a shorter timeframe, this just moved up on our priority list. So we've got to come up with some solutions in the next couple of years, and then there's, the great thing about biosolids is you can turn them into fertilizer. They can be transformed into a Class A biosolid and be land-applied. It's just, it takes energy to heat the biosolids up, and it's just a cost, but we do have, there are solutions out there.
I, I know we, we'll, we'll talk more on it next week, but the, the landfill is going to be huge in many different areas for the community in figuring out how to manage that. So, and I know the, the question I read is, well, you need to limit other municipalities, or people shouldn't be able to bring their trash into Rutherford County, and unfortunately, that's not our decision, so that's, it's not a public landfill. So, but this is yet another area that you really don't think about, that will be affecting how we manage later on down the line.
It, it affects, it's going to, it's going to be, it's going to affect our operations significantly.
significantly.
From my perspective, being a member of that board, I really enjoyed and learned a whole lot about waste, more than I want to know, to be honest with you. But as far as the regulatory agencies, I've learned that the Water and Sewer Department deals with, when you're dealing with TDEC, Corvigniels, possibly impacted by the EPA, that is extremely difficult. Utilities to use always, always answers to is TVA, that's about it. But I've had a respect for Darren and how, and he was talking about issues all the time about trying to do this and trying to make an impact on all the regulatory people and having respect for water. On another issue, anytime a utility can go, in particular, you know, real-time paperless, anytime you can do that, it's an excellent, efficient data collection process, data storage, and easy access, and I would hope that both utility companies, anyone of, especially with AMI, would tend to move toward being paperless and not have to handle a lot of paper, and you're peeping the field, real-time data coming back to your servant, back to the, back to the building, and it's really, it's really helpful when you have catastrophic situations, when you've got all kind of chaos going on, and everybody stumbling over everybody out there in the field. So, continue on, brother.
Councilman Washington, you'll be missed. Your leadership has been outstanding, and I've always appreciated your counsel, and I hate to see you go, but I understand you've got greener pastures to wander, so I, but I do appreciate what you brought to the table.
And he'll make, he'll make sure and water the greener pastures with re purified water.
That's right. I should have brought a photo that Terry Taylor brought me of, if you get a chance to go by the Coleman Farm, there are nice roundbells all over the Coleman Farm, rolled up, ready to harvest, and we get paid for the person that cuts that hay, and comes and collects it. He pays us about $15 per roundbell, and we get a check.
They were out there Sunday. He was out there Sunday working.
Yep. That's the picture, Terry sent me the picture on Tuesday.
Yep. All right, any question for Darren? Thank you, Mr. Core.
I appreciate the council's support, really do. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Lyons, do you have anything else?
I do not. I know we'll have a couple of cleanup items that we've identified as we've gone through the budget and seen some things that need to get cleaned up, and we'll tackle those next week.
So, now that we've gone through every department, if everyone, what we'll do on Thursday, if you've got any questions, I know I've sent Mr. Lyons a couple, but any questions between now and then that Ms. Rider, or Mr. Lyons can help with, that we can do that and then be ready for discussion on Thursday.
And again, if you remember from years past, we won't make any amendments to the budget during the cleanup session, because we need to conduct the public hearing as the budget was proposed. Then, once the public hearing is done, then that's when we typically have, you know, gotten changes from the council to increase or decrease line items.
We're meeting tomorrow night.
I don't think we're meeting tomorrow night, are we?
No meeting tomorrow, no. So, 5:00 next Thursday.
Hey, do you have anything?
The good news is, the landfill's going away. The bad news is, the landfill's going away.
That's right.
That's all I got.
Rick, Ron, Doug.
Just thank you for your support.
Madeline, Bill?
No.
We want to welcome all the people who are here from Springfling. I know we went to Blue, I don't want to advertise for another company, but we went to a restaurant last night, and it took a while to get our food last night, waiting in line for all the people who are in town.
At the chamber board meeting, here were some of the numbers that were reported. 25,000 visitors for Springfling. That's not the athletes, that's visitors to attend the games, and Springfling's estimated to have a $3.5 million impact on the community, so certainly something we're all very proud of.
And they're all at Murfreesboro Parks and Recreation Facilities and, yeah, all over the place. There are several schools that they're using fields, so, great thing. All right, seeing nothing else, we'll stand adjourned.